Mestri namo gorongil do ngul maqmo mgodongi a era l'first day era dur special session el mora order ebogulitl arbeklad madida absursel a moment of silent prayer Okay Clear camera work
Speaker Gibson Kanay
Aye
Delegate Jay Blesso Adorparoy
Aye
Delegate Yutaka Gibbons Jr.
Aye
Vice Speaker Mario S. Libert Delegate Noah Kabso Delegate Portia France Basole Delegate Sebastian R. Marino
Ngartiang
Delegate Ellender Ngiramakati
Aye
Delegate Stephanie Ngiraimey
Ngartiang
Delegate Rebecca Seval Tungirmaait
Ngartiang
Delegate Francisca Rulupototo
Akngartiang
Delegate Mangur W. Alun
Aye
Delegate Timothy R. Sinza
Aye
Delegate Nays Ensoalaplay Delegate Silveryous O. Talley
Aye
Floor Leader Warren S. Umetaro
Aye
Mr. Speaker ngani akworum
Ngari nga akworum se edel transaktaba gisensan se edel lomulawureereh eh di loa isulosa ba is speaker adlegate Kamsong, delegate Kasoli amodigasi ilobengela rera gabsengai eh di ngari nga unilu ulu tir eh di galang ngartiang ta excuse rera rera gabsengai nga adimo mrengasulaga ade floor rera kade gabse sion rera klabsei ebetoga ade alban al l'communications ra ika al bebir ade department ma bebir eh di sel gorakloktu trel ndo utmokniya togora yoosang togora batset ndo se bela ways and means committee chairman tir lul eh kutmokla ikerro gul trletingila batset l'do dengel wasen klow ebetoga hamlara alsel eh la l'gusus se kade wus sion eh la ngul malat kwasen alse pedro wus sion eh mda mre eh di kutmakliya yoosang klowa temede ndi kade mrengasel adasene ta di kade mo obul girel ma eh di mrengasel se akora klow lu uli kade wus sion rera klabsei maqti mo mrengasulaga arbeklad ro eh mo omuska wala le floor lider maka akora omusi ura wureereh rera gabse
Speaker ngul gabse ngel merka ma arbekl members se kade ngar sel number four a agenda gi journal calendar eh nota iker teblongel mora adaption maqmo sion rera adapt rera first day journal rera second special session
Seidamoxion rera a floor iker adapt sion iker el journal mang al sugmanga ngari nga ader pasan mo edul girela iker journal se akmsate al ma ndiak akmo malarasen kyo eh tir iker ro gul go ngem mda adapt iker iker l'tubel journal wal meka mo sion rera a floor lider rera duoy ma ontoh lamangai a journal se
Ah malmolme speaker mo sion was for adoption rera sel one
Oh
Di kulmolma mo sion rera diregal adapt rera first day journal rera onge del regular session
Seidamoxion rera floor lider oise ge tuh l'journals ander sel ekemenga kadi mla adaptagam seid sel suhaisel ongerul journal l'almeka mo sion rera girela floor lider rera first day journal rera dur regular session maqmo mrengasen kyon tir iker ro gul go ngem adapt rera sel journal duoy tu damoxion rera tor
Ah bi ngara iker ngara differal ika draft tel el journal for differal please eh nota ikergih ngari nga third day journal rera second special session fifth day journal rera second special session twenty fourth day journal rera onge del regular session ma third day journal rera onge del reg- a regular session they are so deferred el morsel kuka bal se l'utel meto of the four a adoption ngara number five diaka ngara presidential communication six eh diregal diaka ngara departmental communication onge widra agenda gi sel state communication ngari ngisel number nineteen babil ngela governor rera aimlik state government el merka speaker eh CC rera chairman rera ways and means girela funding rera project rera blue rera aimlik malmol malmora number eight sel senate communication number forty eight adoption rera house joint resolution number twelve dash seven dash three ngela ratification rera sel twenty twenty five amendment to the treaty adlongelela republic of Palau and the FSM ati ngela maritime boundaries number forty nine a adoption rera house joint resolution twelve dash eleven dia sel resolution l'girela ah odang sama olotela klu nitere eh mora mlamodi busra adlongelel Arnold Indalesio Palacio Governor rera CNN Y ah number fifty a transmitter rera senate joint resolution twelve dash nine ratification rera federal programs and service agreement adlongelela government rera mregel ma blue belau number fifty one transmitter rera senate bill number twelve dash sixteen SP two and number fifty two a transmitter rera senate resolution number twelve dash forty seven con- confirmation rera presidential reappointment rera Ms. Surette Belz ideos sel moedala PICRC el lewarak akel sel fifty three a transmitter rera senate resolution twelve dash forty eight confirmation rera presidential appointment rera Ms. Rollin Rollin Ranny moedal sel Palau National Scholarship Board number fifty four a transmitter rera senate resolution twelve dash forty nine l'diregal confirm rera presidential appointment Ms. Ayana Romarui moedala foreign investment board fifty five a transmitter rera senate resolution twelve dash fifty one l'confirm rera appointment rera Catherine Virginia Aldrich is a senate legal counsel rera malmol malmora na in sel reports rera standing committee di imonge ngari nga akmeka mo sion rera adapt rera standing committee report number twelve dash fourteen l'girela house bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three
Seidamoxion rera floor lider emna sekan ma we raba do la asen kyo se di dupsate al rera chairman rera ways and means eh chairman lul gamabol gor a odal dri se iker gemitir report rama beka chairman
Simalungil gabse ngel mora gase speaker ma floor lider maka klanaga kere l'angabse ngel suragate al se speaker rera akta im gemitia mosbe rere ngulie wureereh rera klabsei ngora l'damudenge kwasen ni mderela talbuil ma atedove etian batset amla mora girel mangai mgodoguka obulirel speaker ebul mgodogirel rera klabsei emla ngari ngi mgodog omdas wasia fifteen ten se la senate mostartwa wureereh eh ma kutmok ringi mngari nga ampel ta im tir utmok mesra werede rera waleba pejirenti ngari nga fifteen days with prior to signing se iker iker rera president abatsi tir iker rera twenty twenty six seidamoxion rera gemitir ga rera ways and means and financial matters l'ga amli refer rera house bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three l'alba gataka ta itol ngil wasen it's a bill for an act eh dia sel an act rera budget law for fiscal year twenty six logi authorization rera hundred fifty two million four hundred sixty six thousand eh more appropriate rera hundred fifty two million four hundred sixteen thousand mora national security girela annual general operations special revenue ngari nga debt services sergi rera blue belau eh tiya mobrega rera september dhori rera twenty twenty rera next year rera twenty twenty six gemitir ga wex to report as follows eh Mrs. Speaker rera house someday receive rera presidential communication number twenty seven press com twenty seven l'girela introduction rera fiscal year twenty twenty six budget bill ngilu rera July eight twenty twenty five emla inkuh rera comment rera rera sergi l'press com inkuh rera comments eh diregal olulbengela fund availability analysis sel FAA l'girel rera proposal bill mo mesra rera house bill number twelve dash twenty three eh gamla intuhus se ngira ngathurid regular session se rata twelve duribina olurala rera July ten ngilu rera July eight eh ngilu rera July ten rera first reading eh seidamoxion rera July ten eh ngilu rera first reading rera assigning l'mra gemitir rera ways and means girel rera reporting rera rera president tamli express rera logi sel communication ngi rera l'arabatjet l'wasen ma l'ba gatak l'wasen this budget is balanced and conservative eh reflect rera administration's continued effort to girel increase rera government efficiency and effectiveness l'omesa l'mentel hundred fifty two million is speaker nde ya l'osawenga president wasin klow ro l'girel ikergih togora government rera efficiency and effectiveness eh diregal l'obulirel continue l'madernize outtede l'policy eh ikeri rera policy sel ngasi tial l'bengela gaba jet eser wires rera president further amli explain logi segi l'communication ngil wasia batset rera was drafted taking into account rera ten percent salary raise across the national government l'damudenge kwasen rera October first eh ngi amasa segi du di rera l'government l'ten percent l'ikida ngil patri rera twenty twenty five eh diregal it's a pressing domestic issues l'require urgent attention is speaker ebul moedala ataimtebul iker kwasen keda mlarulilla la l'ongasabdi rera l'abu October first l'teki l'arabatjet rera girel mombling rera arbekla diregal l'continue l'girel republik l'modeplop rera international presence l'ongela simultaneous cultivating rera girel old manu and partnership eh adapt rera infocus approach and strengthen our national security government institutions and economic resilience rera republik eh diregal maintain a robust democratic system rera governance l'mo akampis rera twenty twenty six budget inkuh rera amendments l'mo madernize iker PNC rera sel malmol mo akmo mga taqla iker l'madernize kutmala mo diaga l'obulirel part rera PNC mgodomo kutmok eh kutmokla ikeri bi isten sis eh ngi amor effective rera alsel akshik dip orders ma hot sel press communication amli highlight iker iker specific number one concerning state placrants sel l'osaw rera state placrants rera president rera l'ungisi iyas every state eh ngi sixteen states rera ten percent sel mamesa iker numbers rera state placrant l'mga taqla wasen other ro gul state eh ngi l'at ten percent increase l'diregal soril mokter ngi amok provai rada disisil incentive l'mora national government ni ngukoda omso de l'arabatjet l'man ngi iker guk contractetil ma werede ndi mo yodo ten percent rera ten percent m'dera di mark l'mose ikeri salary or any increase di mark l'mo uplift rera state level l'diregal m'omit sel ten percent l'masun l'enge term l'spe ngi a preset wasin promote rera equity across all levels of government seidamoxion rera swad l'mda ngil kwasen ro gul government eh ngilu segi l'at ten percent across national ma sixteen state ongerum abatset rera president talbel increase ngi partlil girela apes l'obis supporting girel in response to the creation of designated office the groups that will focus in their work addressing economic and security matters hot amli ngari ngas l'obis rera cyber security office ongeru national planning office eh diregal sel anticiperide l'COFA management office sel CRR iki emil gatmokla gampak mgodomlamo ospe l'obis l'obulirel girel segi togora gampak eh diregal ngari ngisel economic advisory group l'ongel se ikeri blotma gatblon erku ete sel obis eh diregal rera iker l'obis is speaker rera basically a communications rera president tbla gatak l'wasen kade musada a defense rera blue belar girel cyber threats eh l'mek kwasen ngari ngi iker cyber threats l'mla hapen l'mora hospital ministeria finance ma ikeri iker l'obis l'momisie ikeri ah onge day rera president rera diregal l'milesi ikeri belse ikeri gatmo ngari ngisel outstanding debt obligations l'high priority rera FY twenty twenty six l'arabatjet rera forward thinking rera president tamli express ngi ah se ikeri prioritize repayment for more expensive debt ngi ikeri belse l'teki l'mengela aral interest ngi mngi dungutyal lo interest l'mudod n'ulharo ikeri maklo interest ngi m'mose rera sopakid ikeri belse rera government so to reduce eh ikeri future interest rera president tamli eh regamendel wasen dungutyal l'ADP policy loan based loans sel seven point five eh ngi tamli tral l'oktob eh ngi FY twenty seven FY twenty five l'mo investor ngi sel embassy ikeri rasa val emukno amli umlotma kedi sailek mbeereiseng diaka priority bel al ta im eh president eh uknamesa segi l'te al wasimede dungutyal l'mudod n'ulharo ikeri belse l'mingela aral eti apet aral mosbe sopakid se ikeri togora abnals ma gemitir ga diregal no support is segi di ah sel longtul financial position rera president rera alorita se isel doalal mora alsel abil akmosmodi kwasen mngalal belse ikeri gita bonosaw sel number four eh diregal president rera amli ngal alorita vod l'mor sel embassy ikeri rera apes sel embassy ngi a proposing rera Canberra rera Australia se amok eslovis nding eh diregal unila speaker rera gemitir diregal misa sel te al wasen Australia wanda wul ngari nga kun embassy ngi rera belau ngel l'mesip alorita segi l'mo ngi embassy diplomarik taisi segi ma flight amla modiwekamze amla mo ndas l'mlamotel meden wasen eh expand rera werede through ikeri diplomatic relations logi tala embassy girel mora Australia sel mamon ngayim rera anticipate rera hosting rera Pacific Island Forum leaders ngi atel edel diregal mit rera rera la president ma eh diregal wasen tiya it's the minimum cost l'tira anticipate ngi tu wasi weti ikeri rada disabam nospe ngi isel rera Pacific Island Forum leaders meeting amo ringi August twenty twenty six l'mo olmodul minera l'arabatjet rera republik amo host ngi ikeri ikeri gor a five rera president is speaker rera gor a manmilyata rera sel abatset l'mga l'mes outside ikeri girel weredes rera pans ma gemitir rera ways and means amal not faro l'review l'ongel sel FAA amli atas l'ongel tel report mesel communication eh diregal l'mot ngi atel edel oiliya third quarter report rera after rera transmitter tel bill mesel alme third quarter report emlosu edel omes ngi eh omes kwasen ngantingela ro udol m'atmok emla ngi atel edel l'mes rera ministeria finance ngi ati ngel raka ikeri l'ongela ro gul directors kwasen wa ngara ngatetel l'telefa eh wa ngara ngatetel l'akaleksyon eh wa ngara ngatetel l'mingetel l'odol m'ngara ngado somoketel l'odol is speaker eh diregal ngi atel edel l'orke rera ikeri guk apes l'obis itif kwasen ngara ngamal mokter ngi moktu l'odol moitl raka sel in addition to the fiscal matters sel mamesa rera sel next rera priora is speaker eh diregal l'mes ikeri telela vorttilitira market iki eh l'mle mitl adaga COFA board l'masen wa ngara ngodol l'COFA sel diregal otiya seasingi iki l'masen m'ngara ngadurur rera ikeri l'dudu edel across rera republik l'ongel tel bol l'tiritira a market mgodol mes iki kwasen rera president rera large stream l'stry rera necessary balance between r'antemperima future spending l'atsi basi iki l'swale tsi kow mgodol mes ikeri amendments eh witsi ikeri tamli ekill wasen appropriate eh will help and refine ikeri spending rera girel rera twenty twenty three rera house bill number twenty twelve dash twenty three dash three eh kwasen it's a viable tool in advance ikeri segi l'sercredi ma ekonomiya l'mes ikeri girel market rera outside l'me weg l'mose rera l'mes kwasen ikeri asobakid rera iya eh diregal in addition to the fiscal matters is speaker rera twelve dash twenty three dash three r'antena ikeri policy ma technical writers l'madernize ikeri PNC kow ma gemitir ga wa diaga l'antesta ikeri technical writers girel ikeri apes l'deaga l'apes l'update segi l'PNC l'eki achi ikeri contribute l'girela a rule of law r'gir mngi rera kutmokla ikeri l'mla mo otaktal ngari ngi enamo diaga tutlen maka move on l'update ngi nding eh diregal rera gemitir ga uknamtigil wasen ngari ngi ikeri policy process sel ngan sel tiya twelve dash twenty three dash three l'require rera multiklow investigation is speaker sel manne klow iker manne maklon ta im oh itel tral befar ro gul lo mesel akswayal rera twenty twenty two eh diregal kadospe rera apes l'kutmakli se ma sel mamese is speaker rera discussion l'girel segi l' ikeri girel policy eh l'mobgilk kwasen ngalevukul bol dilay tial akswol budget iki ma gemitir ga regamendel wasen eh di we move ikeri girel complex policy l'writers from the bill nding diaga dong we need more time l'kutmak mngari ngar bay time sel l'kutmakla ikeri policy eh ru l'eh mo discuss ikeri girel policy mesel se l'wasen ngara mgodol l'top ma proposal following amendment sel ikeri rama kutmak rera l'executive section two executive operations eh ah subsection one sel obis rera president the president bill includes ikeri new line items funding for ikeri l'gatak kwasen ngari nga COFA management office NEAG sel economic advisory group ngari nga cyber security office national planning office eh apes rera ikeri meeting l'ki rama l'mutmok l'ongela ministeria finance ma rera la president eh ngari ngi ikeri guk ki rama wasen ikeri apes l'obis ma wukte tel eda tenu tila obulirel ngasen l'mukvidu se ikeri amount installing fund eh l'mes l'mo ngara ngaspenditju tiri emlmal m'ngay ngasev l'mutmok l'budurur eh diregal president tamli raba l'ah sel mamese tel bil ngari ngisel guk president sel bil amli raba l'ah ikeri president staipin di rera gemitir ga kwasen diya ngi l'mut malmol m'sel mosarisbo malmol malmol ma ikeri l'dudu dira president amli SS l'mora subsection three rera ministeria finance mngari ngi ikeri new line items ma funding that were created as new offices mngari ngisel financial and economic intelligence office sel talabes rera finance sector internship talabes internal audit and audit violation m'talabes ma debt management unit ma gemitir ga amli regamendel wasen ngari ngi ya star up eh diregal star up rera offices is eh mgodoguka morsel sepede guk start ikeri l'obis iki rama malmol m'lomes wasen wa ngara annits ma ngari ngisel fifty thousand rera vidaxion l'more ikeri l'obis eh diregal sel subsection four rera ministeria state abil amli inkuh rera apes l'airm l'mok provide rera hundred eighty seven thousand l'mo establis segi l'obis rera Canberra Australia ma gemitir ga rera m'esport is segi because sel ngari ngisel thirty years relationship ikeri l'ongela Australia obisitira l'ma establis belau l'masul man ngil it's stew ma unil te al l'ki ma Australia mo resisiu apes sion l'ki rera tawala embassy rera mora subsection five rera ministeria education eh ngis speaker rera l'mek kwasen ngon l'ma klow klow l'klotetel ministeria ikeri rera blol l'ma raperity ma dimla gaskut nani maluma question rera ministeria gemitir ga wasen tel udo l'gabay m'oget m'glen l'msance nding eh diregal logi te ikeri guk ngel l'arabatjet ngel mesa ro gul ah eh diregal strongly overall wasen girel support rera educational system mgodomor ngi sel arngel sel udo l'mora ministeria education sel subsection seven rera ministeria health rera ministeria health and human services rera president rera antensa technical errors sel that needed corrected ikeri bl'giteri l'kutmak addition l'iyaga gemitir ga amli regamendel vidu rera a funding sel hospital and clinical services by hundred twenty seven thousand ngari ngisel ikeri l'mudod ngilul m'stirim l'apa rera two point three million mgodogukul mes iki kwasen ngalel teregi l'ngalaq eh l'mes ikeri expenditure ngilu sel hundred eighty seven thousand is segi togora rera ministeria health and human services l'mosel subsection eight mngari ngisel ministeria human resources and human resources culture tourism and development MR MH RCTV rera president rera diregal amli inkuh rera line item rera alsel is speaker sel masil belau ngilos is speaker rera sel rera ministeria rera gemitia l'mdengey amnaptingi wasen masil belawa independent organization diaga l'sm'deaga l'government entity m'ul mandi one time rera annual sel togora masil belawa rera funder ngi m'deaga l'part rera ministeria rera gemitia amli regamendel na otubidi l'mo mute segi line item m'obes l'item segi l'desessil amount sel seventy five thousand l'mostir annual conference fee di mo diaga l'ongela rera ministeria l'mo l'iyak m'deaga l'part rera ministeria sel mamese rera ngai segi se ikeri vidaxion amo sel ambidos sel dimo dimo di ngi it's independent organization m'deaga l'part rera rera ministeria l'mdeki kwasen l'dasul girel se speaker rera ngari ngi ikeri responsibility tira ministeria rera MS RCTV l'girel monitor ikeri funding sel spend eh it's a government one ma ulmitelau l'das kwasen l'mbol tuh sel ministeria nding diaga l'girel wasen tel udu damo eh reporting at tira kwasen l'til m'atmok rera reporting ma ikeri expenditure seti se iki rama tamli behind rera l'das kwasen l'ma l'ma ministeria We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the hotel. The 11 members. The 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the hotel. We will have the independence. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the total. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. 47%. We will have the human resources. We will have the total. Subsection nine. The Ministry of Infrastructure and Industry. M P I I. We provide 2.5 million for national electricity. We will have the 11 members. We will have the capital electricity maintenance. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. The amount is there because. We will have the 11 members. 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 Capital. Project. Painting. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the one time appropriation. We will have the 11 members. 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 The president. The 11 members. We will have 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 the president. We will have the 11 members. We will have the legislative branch. We will have the 11 members. The president. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the government. We will have the Allah. We will have the 11 members. We will have the funding levels. Section seven. Independent agencies. Over R P P L 1137. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the one time. Actually, the ministry has 200,000. 120,000 more auditors. We have 80,000 more renovation of the city. The 11 members of renovation. It's a continuing project. We will have the contract. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We have 80,000. We have the contract. The building. We will have the time. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. Public Auditorial Office. We will have the 11 members. We will have the funding. 1137. We will have the 1137. We have the public auditor office. We will have the continuing funding. 80,000. The 11 members. We will have 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 the 11 members. 2026. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the renovation of the city. We will have the. Proposed amendment. We will have section eight. We will have other agencies. We will have 10,000. We will have Red Cross. We will have the 121. We will have the 121. We will have the 121. We will have 120,000 on top of 72,000. We will have the 120,000. We will have the follow 1137. We will have the funding. We will have the 121. We will have the 121. We will have the 121. We will have the funding level. 2025. We will have the 11 members. Proposed amendment. We will have section nine. We will have education assistant. We have 8. Public schools. We will have the issue. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the funding. We will have the funding. We have the schedule. We will have the elementary. S D A. We will have the 11 members. S D A school. Elementary school. We will have the 11 members. S D A kindergarten. We will solicit a number of students. Report kindergarten. We will have the elementary school. We will have the fluctuate about numbers. We will have the kindergarten. We will have the school. We will have the school. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the kindergarten to eighth grade. We have the schedule. We will have the schedule. We will have the kindergarten. We will have the kindergarten. We will have the elementary school. Kinders all the way to eighth grade. We will have the funding. We will have the principal. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. Exactly 37,000 more kindergarten. We will have the 11 members. We will have the fluctuate. The number of students. We will have Maristella. We will have Emmaus. We have Emmaus. We will have the kindergarten. We will have the elementary. We will have the 11 members. We will have the one or two students. We will have the first grade. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the president. We will have the president. We will have the transfer fund. The maintenance. The deposit preference container. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the election. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the change. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the proposal. Proposal amendment. Section fourteen. We will have the coordination mechanism. We will have the authority appropriate at 800,000. We will have the. We will authorize and appropriate the sum of 800,000 for national coordination mechanism. The president's version. We have authorized 850. We will appropriate the 800,000. We have the grant scheme. We will have the administrative costs. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We have the title. We will have the 50,000. We will have the authorization. We will have the 11 members. We have the ministry. We have the president. We have the 50,000. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 800,000. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the funding level. All general reserve. We will have the fund. We will have the civil reserve. Climate resilience. We will have infrastructure maintenance fund. We will have the application. We will have the special fund created by law. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the time. We will have the 11 members. Funding level. We will have section nineteen. We will have debt services. We will have the language. We will have the subsection nine. Once payment. We will have the R O C. It pretends to specific loans. N D B P. We will have Taiwan. Make Taiwan loan. What the Media Commercial Bank. We will have I C D F Taiwan. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the specify. We will have the 7.5. We will have the 7.5. We will have the 3 point. Over 3 million. Over 4 million. We will have the 7.5. We will have the 11 members. 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 We will have the practice. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. Over the last two years. We will have the loan. We will have the 1131. We will have the 1137. We will have the 262,000 each year. We will have the 11 members. 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 Project. We will have the application. We will have the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. All the 11 members. We will have the 11 members. We will have the assistance. We will have the housing. We will have the projects. We will have the 11 members. We will have the I C D F. We will have the Media Bank. The president. We will have the debt services. We will have the item. We will have the 11 members. We will have the section twenty. We will have outside grant. We will have development assistance. We will have the programming. We will have the standard.[1299.54] We said, total reprogramming, I guess, standard, the party, any item, I would be mobile, I'm going to. Yeah, proposal amendment, the section twenty two, cell P P U C, automatic. Good price adjustment clause, my lifeline subsidy program. Again, again, the president, I'm not going to, so there is. Lee, I have a meeting, I will ignore you, I will swear, I will. Oh, cell automatic food, uh, price adjustment clause, same name, I'm not. Cell, they're replacing, I'm going to, I'm going to. And get the change, I say, the term, I will spare, I will get the term, I will spare. My sales, action heading must be amended, eh, my, I don't know, change, I mean, I'm saying. There is a long, yeah, president, the. Uh, my proposal nine hundred sixty thousand, I guess, the residential and wastewater subsidy. Say nine hundred sixty thousand, I'm the level eleven thirty seven, but it is the beginning of twenty twenty five. Yeah, twelve thousand one, I'm not change away, the P P U C. It's a change away, the P P U C, I'm not so, since I would do, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, twenty, two hundred fifty thousand. The what the president did, I didn't, he said, in cell, actual weight, I'm not going to. And then, you sell this, this amount, eleven thirty seven, maybe, my, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. The more, I have a, it's a full subsidy, I fiscal year, twenty twenty six. Additional two hundred fifty thousand. My cell total, I'm sorry, zero, give a twelve thousand one, one million, two hundred ten thousand. I'm more second waste water, my water subsidy, I give them now, I'm not. I'm a moon ball, I'm not, I'll build a patient, I didn't like, I'm going to, I'm going to sell, residential, electric, subsidy. I'm not there, cause I have a meeting, I have a meeting, I have.
Big week. Ma ulmung se edel mubti, ma ulmula liya se gidde. Ulya se gidde. Vonge ra pejidantel mubti, ni ndiaga lboora pension ma diaga bo. Masiril udo da malmanten sel boora next section andi kwa se malmanten moora, National Trust Juris. Gada moora section thirty seven, we propose amending in a section of six or eight title forty. Etia sel Minister of Finance and his six senior agir la procurement of officer P O for contractual services. Gada mungel wasi, kida angil baktiya sel togora human services and moora M H R C T V. Elang gada mulu de sel procurement authority, global moora Ministry of Finance. Tadrigal part regel contractual service mung sel human services ospeera over personnel andi contractual ta ngala. Ma procurement contractual ta ngala Ministry of Finance. Ma ulmugik wasi, tia ngadrigal who create that discrepancy ra ngalila contractual demitia togora. Ngia edel mobile fire, ma gamiti wasi, ngia edel oputbidi, mo, mo tulomisingi wasi. Mga ngala ngadaluu tulon dagai geltab. Se gidha opuwele da gamitil gelsa gidde togora procurement contractual services, muga demil bakti. Mas gidha time, elmo tul mobile fire agir wasi, they can do contract outsider agir togora. Of personnel. Tadrigal gamitila, abeg amending in a section thirty eight. Sel togora work week, la government. Sel president propose a work week la government, mo diaga seven dori to eleven dori, twelve dori mo four dori. Edi moste la Monday to Friday, work week asel expanded mo akwadingi. Esegida dirigal one regel policy right there, but wasi tia ngai gamitil ga wa recommend oputbidi. Mmal mol mungas tarisco, dojol amanday to Friday government, seven dori mo eleven dori, twelve dori mo four dori. Se gidha moste se gidde. Ndiga ba vodojol, ngara agir. Gada mo mmal mol mungas se gidde seven dori to eleven dori ma twelve dori, alungul da asamadu masan. Dirigal one regel introducing policy ra right there, president amintroducing in a section thirty nine. Amending in a section twenty forty da title dori tiri, tia sel togora minimum wage retirement for. Tia opun gel agen togora S S sel dungai gel mo, minimum wage sa mo required mo gela, mesem opun gel agel bebe ra right there. Muga demil bakti, dingbukna ona section, opun gel agen, sen chenza agen, girel chenza agen, amga dirigal mungel. Tadrigal mo rje opun gel, mo, dijusiu udo, ma ken dingbukta togora S S pension. Eh, gada mora section forty, we propose amendment, nganiya tablon ra title forty two. Agen mo establish a moral vehicle fees, ma learner's permit fees that are paid to applicable state treasury. And are not be posted into the national treasury. Agamilti, a conference with the president, agel proposal because they reflect the current practice amendment to serve as update. Update agir the P N C, mesel udo da diaga lmal mal national treasury, agen la mo, lmaa against state affected. Lmaa against state affected treasury. Gada dirigal di update se gidde system, the P N C, gada system. Tadrigal gamitila mnomes agir. Section forty one, forty two, forty three, forty five, forty six, ndiaga forty six, forty seven, forty eight, forty nine, old way mo fifty four. Agir agil, gukti chenza agel besta. La update ringal P N C, ma ndiaga question ngi, it's a standard update, muga demu ba agen from division to view other na chenz. Elang traktina P N C, ma agel diaga question agir ngi, gida mna check. Gada mo section forty six, ngani sel proposal amendment, se gidha opuwele san aksoal mega difference. Ndiga la updating as aksoal amendment, agel la eight or six man nine or four, da title eleven. Sel mnomes da title eleven, eh, eight or six, agir. Reflect ra Palau Visitors Authority, mesel dung Palau Tourism Commission. Ne ra gro se mungia Palau Visitors Authority, ndi. Umdasul girel se wasi, gabi update from Palau. Tourist Commission, sel time and dimlaa Palau View of Tourism. Elam na mungia boat, Palau Visitors Authority na mungia View of Tourism. Agen agir blagtaq ngal aler la eight or six man nine or four, sel boora eight or six, mesaa da taxi, mesel map, tira provider ngi. Esay, map, tira provider ngi, mo ra ada taxi, umdasu intogora marketing ma. Blubelau, enguni la bulo la ngi la P V A, muga vonge se mua. P V A, ndiaga question agir, isel opuana or four, insel gukl aler la anan or four au wasi. Ntira dirigal mo part tia le. Eh, qamenta, te limo gamet luopun gel la president, togora pegel applicant mo beke state malu. Ngombalin mo part of tourism, eh, mo soj nganga tourist. Se gidha wasi, se amal mongala aler la B O T, muga demu bengil nganga P V A, mua B O T, ma B O T amal mongala agir licensing. Ya P V A mmal mol mungala marketing, eh, diaga. Se gidha dimlewa la mo, agen agir title, section forty six, olmuga dingil bakti, muga diaga luopun gel agir standard, mo, omu bengil mo se agir. Dirigal section fifty five, umdas, amend ra section one or eight, G ma eight title twenty eight. Agir agir, request F I B, gada dirigal, wasi, request Apalau Visitors. Mo one regel ala adi tira moste il gamet, girela foreign investment approval certificate applications. Esegu umdasu, gada dirigal gukmestirira opu ta ngala alla P V A. Wasi, tumo part regel agir gamet, agel agencies loopun gel. President togora F I B, ma gamitila recommend lmu bakti se. Emlomol ma ngala, murobe, which they are doing really well, opu waseri additional. Duriro girela togora F I B, ma investment approval certificate application, gukmo ma sangra, gukmo ma sangra bebe ra togora regulations. Eh, marketing, soadu focus ra marketing, se gidha gamitila, gukmusingin otherwise. Se vele vaidevengbati, lmaa mual ma agel nganiya H N C loopun gel la president duriro agen, P V A la abol se. Dirigal, sel section fifty six, sel mo. Fifty, sixty three, ager technical right there, amend ra code, so best amadre na S P N C, ma agel diaga question agir, ndi update the P N C. Gada mo ra, agel besta section, agida mna gutmukla, sel tia. La project. Eh, rote, section seven, sel eleven thirty seven. Was amended by section five, twelve thousand one. Gada ni imaga sel edit taufen, agir agir agel aksoal amendment, agir mna sois, agel recommendation da gamitila. Mesel togora public auditor, amom mmal mol mungas eleven thirty seven, twelve thousand one. Ma ndiaga vodosiga udo mo, mla gada vonge, asumung coming September dori. Mesel udo, sel mo, plan mo, bengiada twenty twenty six, alungul bakti, se gidde sel edit tau, sel mo, twenty twenty six. Ngiamal mol, mesel adari tira elan eleven thirty seven. Ma ulmuga da udu lir monan lapsi. Gada mungel wasi, anan lapsi, agen agir project, two years ago. Masuma update two years, ndiaga mna tukla. Emo breka se gidde. Depending ra, mua la project. Ma description la project. Gada moste section forty nine, ndirigal ngani sel sixty thousand. Legida git maktil mo ra, appellative state, ngani agel port parts, ma services. Luopun gel set twenty thousand, luopun gel set forty thousand, diliya eleven thirty seven. Sel ramp, agida mna wasi, net chenza auura sel nomralela ramp, ten long song, sel ma unu dimlaa la ngi tanti ra. Se gidha ulmuga da udu, dirigal, require ngil mo, ngalakwa elan September dori, mungmal mol mung, agida moste ala. Ilmu ga beri, mmo se, mmo se. Se gidha tara mla elan. Monan lapsi, se gidde togora bu tuampu. Gada mora eleven, dirigal section two eleven thirty seven, ndiaga loongi tli wasi. Ngani sel bed imaga ngil mo ra B R T, sel View of Revenue Taxation, esel falhandetau, sel mo ra procurement tax management system. Tadrigal ongoing, dingbuk togora procurement ringi ma. Obrel, ndiaga se el muma ra by December, September dori, won tira diaktor agen abu, wasi mnu. Mesaa, skaga one year, twenty six tia la project, muma ra, ma diaga tegmeq. Ma ndiaga question agir, muga demu udu ngan lapsi, mmal mol mmal mo twenty twenty six. Gada mora, sel number four, muga the provider, agen state funding, mo ra malgayo. Ah, twelve thousand twenty three. Ah, funding for improvement project, ra emili, ma irai, ma. Sel agar orior, da diaga togora improvement, ah, C I P, sel mmal mol, taobra agel cost ra waste collection. Sel malgayo state, ma nganiya opu, se agel invest, ah, C I P, ra malgayo, ma ngur mngui, ma ngatpa, ma. Ah, abil leo. Agen agir akora, na retive, agir espigere, elaga mo, agel aksoal amendment. Ra twelve thousand twenty three. Gada mdek wasi, title rabil, ngani agel dosis, ba sel, muka mmasa. Tadrigi, gada mna mo authorize, one hundred fifty four million sixty two thousand. Appropriate ra hundred fifty two million eight hundred sixty two. Se gidha platon wasi, ra elan la project. Agen agir togora, P P U C, agen amal mi lakta lo. Ma ulmuga dingil naso, mo isapku la. Sel obra executive branch, ndiaga gublakti, ngara agir, chense se gidha ma mege ma, usiu si sel sama, authorization appropriate. From seven eight thousand, gada me video singi mo sixty nine thousand, four hundred, sixty nine million, four hundred six thousand. Tadrigal. Legida agel anticipate the discussion international revenues, muga demu video singi five three nine thousand, four hundred sixty eight. Ya, agen bigara compact first fund, ma city, ya, pa agen mmal mol mala si. Amlo da, hofa management office, se be, gada mmas wasi, gada ngil bakti, arat kel tiala ngi, esemya six hundred thousand. Previously, se adotu lo mo, tel hofa negotiation, gada mutu kia five hundred thousand, elan eleven thirty seven. Tame video singi two hundred thousand, gada mmas expenditure, sel mla mutu ngalio. Esel, tablon abol tag, sel E A T, ma hofa, umdasu, miseficien ta five hundred thousand, agamitila, umdasu, five hundred thousand, sel. Ma agel togora, eslovisa cybersecurity, ma Y C, ma National Planning Office, gada Y C. Ma President's State Pen, mmal mol mungas tarisco. Agen agir agel gora, direct. Mika tukla, sel, mesel Ministry of Finance, ma diaga amlo da, agir agir be eslovis. Muga dirigal, dijusiu, berada, blad, S S Pen, wasa fifty thousand, amingala financial assistance. Se gidde internal audit, audit base, agen agir, gada mlo da, alsel ngai. Gada mmal mol mungas dijusiu, gada kankulu opun gel agel agara Ministry of State, dimlaa gada mlo da alsel. Eh, moste Ministry of Education, muga dirigal, mika kankulu opun gel, president, ra Ministry of Education, dimlaa. Amlo da, mmal mol mungas thirty million, amal manten mo, Ministry of Education, Ministry of Justice, gada dirigal, legel, luna sa, Ministry of Justice, gada dirigal. Gada mna opun gel, president, regel, mmal mol mungala, eight million seven hundred seventy nine thousand. Ya Ministry of Fair and Human Services, sel H H S, se gidha dimletal mlo da ngi. Asel View of Hospital Clinic, Hospital and Clinical Services, se from eight million to nine million, mo ra ten million, about two point three million, aningas. Understand, so ya new hiring, ma services, hospital, ma doctor, ma nurse, ma additional, mdu tira, ala mo. Legu dung mmas wasi, abungu, hundred twenty seven thousand, se, ndiaga mal, termal tira, sel ager services. Dimtans, se gidha mo, muga dingil bakti, sel hundred twenty seven thousand. Agidam ngil wasi, over the last two years, se gada boira, sel equipment services, sel mo tira, two point five million. Actually, two million four hundred eighty eight thousand, ena motivation waseri, gada mmas expenditure, tira, gada ngi. Umdasu, gamitila omala pasin se, pasumba, moste hundred twenty seven thousand, tira, ndiaga. Se gidde sel omlo da, la all hotel belaufe, mo all hotel belaufe, luopun gel, independent state celebration, esegida hundred thirty thousand. Pedi, gilul, wasi, amal mal, ngal ba ba, all hotel belaufe, wasi, ndiaga, opun gel, independent state, mo ulmula, mo specific. Wasi ngani, mbi ga, independent state is covered. Se gidde sel omlo da, sel F, sel bela, lilo tungi, sel Ministry da. Agen agir le, M H R C T V, agamitila omala wasi, tia ngai independent agency, organization, ma ndiaga bulo opun gel, amispi. Muga demu udo bidi, el mal mol, mesel funding, sel mua mesi, agin, we forget the total amount. Ministry Infrastructure, dimletal omlo da, mungis, sel View of Education, gada. Mila fifty thousand, tira, mo gabe agir, other expenses, ngi, gamitila, gada, swed wasi, ndiaga, filmare agir. Omlo da, mmal mol, iklo omlo da, sel gidde National Capital Electricity Maintenance, se gidde three hundred thousand, ena motivation, doval, gada mmas tiri. Mna mo mera orior, se gidde, agir bakti, ngi amal mol mti. National Capital Electricity Maintenance, ena la two point two million, mna mo mera almost pay. Agen agir, agen le one time appropriation, ngi amal mol, mila gada mup, dimlaa. Mga diaga necessary. Se gidha total ngil, mo nine million fifty five thousand. Gada mora. Ministry of Culture and Fisheries. Dimlaa, omlo da alsel, mmal mol, mesel gidha total mo. Mmasa, sixteen nine thousand four hundred six, sixteen nine million four hundred six thousand, la total executive, se gidde reflect, se gidde. Se yamla mura. Elaga mo ra, Black want, se gidha omlo da, section six. Gada mningi, gada sel practice, agir espigere, beke la, regel la Black want, sel Black want, ngani se gidde, president, amne propose ra. Eight seven thousand, mo ra angaustic. Esel, sel propose, eh, seven thousand, mo ra angaustic. Eh, se close, ten percent, la angaustic, angi, ndirigal pasin, ndiaga, regel la, any mark, ndiaga, will practice, abe, ma, Black want. Outside, se gidde, authority, la constitution, la, every state, ma amrula. Dingai, se gidde, guk application, ngai edela, seven thousand, mesel mual. Ndi, ndiaga, ma, gada mo si, gada mo, gada si gidde. Muda da, maintain, sel practice, wasi, ndiaga, Black want, ta mo. Malu, ngi ma. Mesel bakti, sel language, ya udo, sel ten percent, ndi serving, ala, dama, regel, probably. Se gidde agir, sir, asur, ngi, ndiaga, lo, ndiaga, omlo da, sel la project, Black want, mmal mol, inclusive. Agir ten percent, mo ra beke state, sel blagtaq wasi, ndiaga discrepancy ngi, gada beke blue, amai se ten percent, across the. Se gidha, diaga omlo da. Agir togora dependent agencies. Muga demu, gada, public auditor, dingil bakti, sel one time appropriation, ngi, eight thousand, gada mme, gada, it's an unlock, singi, la, mga diaga, wasi, sel, go, but continue twenty twenty six. Dimlaa, reflect, the, se, ma ulm, mesel mmasa, ngi, nine hundred seventy thousand, include, the, sel, hundred twenty, mala mol, mesel, agir. Se gidha, togora, sel, agel, public auditor. Dim, se gidde, nan lapsi, amo gabe, se gidde, cost, le, se continue. Dimlaa, omlo da, mregel bebe, gada mo, sel other agencies, da section eight. Dirigal omlo da, msa gidha, omlo da, sel bed cost, wasi, dimu, park, eleven thirty seven, sel, bir la, la, actually, twelve thousand, esamended by twelve thousand. Mesel, se gidha, omlo da, agir, other agencies, mung dijusiu. Muga kankulu opun gel, president, regel, numbers, agil other agencies. Sel obra, agel, education assistance, agir bed extern wasi, atogora, eh, mouse, ma betani high school, ma agen, dekate na, di mo one. Di mo one, mbi mo se agir, eh, school, gabe, tira uwi, mga diaga, agir, tingel, mual, ose, asavu, di, mga diaga, se. Sel, awro, ra di mo tira, tira di tira. Opun gel la, S T A kindergarten, ma Catholic kindergarten, adi, opun gel la, Mariste La School, Catholic kindergarten, ma agel total amount, ngi, adi, mo one. Sel olar ngi, indis, agel, purpose, mga diaga. La factory. Gada mora, section fourteen, se gidde, for any mechanism, agida, mna, sa, ngil wasi. Eight hundred fifty thousand was authorized, eh, appropriation, adi, eight hundred thousand, eh, man, mle, multe, da title, da Abi. Ma, wasi, nganiya, lan, tira, mo, authorized, or, more appropriate, ten fifty thousand, ndiaga, agel scheme, amna gatmo. Olmuma mo, di mo, authorize and appropriate, sel, direct, eight hundred thousand. Ndiaga, omlo da, se gidde, sel, section nineteen, gada mnespecify, agir, loan, da N D B P, agir, or, sel, seven hundred, sel, seven million four hundred thousand, mo gabe. Se dimle, open, wasi, R O C loans, agir, no specify, wasi, more, se gidde, wasi, advance payment, mo N D B P. Reprovision of Palau, China, Taiwan loans, da, sel, Merabang, mesel, A C D F, Taiwan loan, agen agir. Ya, se di one omlo da, mo agel, that services, ager, mna, gansalirete, agel, be se, gada. Esel, seven hundred, sel, seven million four hundred thousand. Se gidde, sel section, da, twenty two, da P P U C, sel adjustment, or, medical adjustment clause, se gidha, move, gada mna mo ra, the R. Eh, sel lifeline subsidy, since, sel amount, gada mna, homorita, se gidde, total number, agir, sel, one point seven million, mesel, two hundred fifty thousand. Mesel, two hundred fifty thousand, se gidde, mo gabe, ngel, one million, two hundred ten, ngi, mna gatmukla, full year, from October to September dori, anex. Agel subsidy, amal mol, m, dijusiu, language, sel, durspe, agir, la, fuel cost, ma, ten, ten cents per kilowatt. Amount, ngi, ah, five hundred kilowatt per month, se gidha, moment, se, amal, me, change, chloro, uli, agir, me, mega, the ten cent, ager, ager, the president. Gada mora, sel, section twenty six. Oh, sel, section twenty four, sel, retired citizen and disabled citizen, sel, lo ulmle, one point four, gada mna, find out, sel, mua du, a director, wasi, aksoal number is less than. Ah, one, one point two, muga demu, one point two is safe, eh, nas, gabe, adro uwi, muga dima, chelse, sel authorization, and mo, one point two, instead of one point four. Like previous, sel, adotu, start, eh, one point four, gada mle, dasu, sel, gada msa. Akora, extra, mal ngani, mga diaga, bo, song, sel, ndiaga, mna, define, ngi, esegida, last day out, from the year, tune, now, one point two is sufficient, gabe, agir, cost. Sel mmas, ngai agir, the cost out, ndiaga, appropriated, gada mo, appropriate, ringi, la, alsel, la, elan, twenty twenty six. Ndiga moit, se gidha, ma, mukta, wasi. Sel disaster, contingency, milsa, ringi, was two hundred thousand, and, what appropriate, ringi. Se gidde, fee, appropriation, sel udo, de, mo, of his, a vice president, eh, mga, se gidde, secret, Mr. Fan, the manager of the board of trustees. Se gidha, mo, gukki, se gidde, emu, sel udo, wasi, given, se gidde, principal, wasi. Nganiya disaster, malu, calamity, shock, or anything of that sort, and, or, sel udo, ngel, approval, the president, must be, ma, president, the senate. Ngia, to, sel udo, mga diaga, diaga, declaration, emergency, or anything of that sort, and, register, a situation, eh, mala, pura, se di mo, se gidde, disaster. Gugensel udo, de, diaga, ngala, wasi. Agen agir, mmasa, da, section twenty nine, agen agir, agel, right there, agir, to, togora. Ah, employment contribution, from one, from eight to nine percent, agen agir, aboda, address, uwi, mual, mesel, mmasa, posa, all the way, mo ra, page. Ah, thirty eight, mera, twenty eight, ma twenty eight, agen agir, agel, the policy, agida, mna, dimlaa, ngel wasi, gamitila, orior, wasi, mo rje, ngi, da, uwi. Mga diaga, guktel, bolongor, tia, project. Muka, agel, togora, labor, ma agel, bestel fee, agel, bestel fee, espigere, da, dirigal, gamitila, omra. Omra, ngan, dinga, ngi, agel, tablon, be, esel, work permit, renewal fee. Ngala, sel, mga agil, mmasa, wasi, nganiya. Agel, agil, guk, mmasa, agel, togora, labor. Ya, mningi, wasi, gada mna, agri, es, agel, mo, introdu sa, ya, mmal mol, mukla. Gada mora, sel, guk, section thirty six, agen agir, agel, amendment, sel, togora, five dollar, mo ra, Palau International Airport, ma, International Coral Reef Center. Agel, la Marine Sanctuary, se gidde, dingil bakti, emu, sel udo, de, mo ra, channel reserve, National Trust Juris, ndiaga, boora, togora airport, ma togora pension. Mesel mmasa, ngel, lo ul, tira, git makli, gubu, park, to twenty five dollar, esel, pingel, a fifty percent, mo ra. A maintenance, ma civil service, mungmal mol, mungas, agir, esel, twenty two dollar fifty cents, sel mo ra, National Trust Juris, in, se gidde, P P F. Ah, a mask, by five dollar, se gidde, sel, mua, mua, twenty seven fifty, se gidde, sel, National Trust. Dirigal mo ra, agel, amendment, da section thirty seven. Ngani, sel, amendment, ra, procurement, se gidde, lu, gue, gusimba, discrepancy, ra, to, ngalila, Ministry of Finance, mesel, M H R C T V, tira, omra, human resources, sel. Ngia edel, mutu, mado du, edifine, ngil, mungit, ma ndiaga, opul, part, etel, project, guk, mo uli, gada, agel, information is yet to be achieved. Agen agir, gora, part of policy, olmuga, move, including, agel, togora, se gidde, section eight, agir, ngil bakti. Mesaa, de, se gidde, basic work week, a basic work week, establis, da, Monday to Friday, seven dori to eleven dori, twelve thirty to four thirty. Agamitila, recommend, wasi, lmal mol, mungas, government, la, se gidde, starisco. Elaga, lot, ngi, sel, recommendation, of president. Section thirty nine, agen agir, agel, policy, minup, agel, retirement age, from sixty to sixty five, luopun gel, agen agir. Increase, every year, agen, dirigal, wasi, gada, mmasa, du, ulmuma, gamitila. Dirigal, sel, togora, Palau Visitors Authority, Authority, ah, di, moving, ma, previous, mungas, examine, agel, statements, information, ma, documents. File for any application, agel, agency, for any person or applicant, eh, ma, patient, ta, mo, gatmukla, agir. Eh, mo ra, B O T, ndiaga, bo.
...
Mlamlam salin kuisi chairman elelen alamobtokol adha mlam apply ngi. E se seralgotol openendimla karal alal nombrasakumotia ngarinyar eli ra drongo ngi. Ndidi ala kadonamo madingelos esel dipendra akukwa saudutira alad et se elichi bul girelse tabmofaila application of finance. Se tokora wolgin permitte chairman aktiriga malmrengasulil girelse. Se kadadi omeseringi maigel fisi losar mlam adiyagal ragul adhabelasubir. Ya mostra adhabela lospe tigal adraudor. Igel adal guktiyakal san mal wangra in gambutir. Matoospe tigal adal held butir espeselyawata korase sumaga. Ndiyagal se maklolo gogu. Alsumukoma peratu isil iben magrin iol permit. Se se maklolo dodukumal masauli wasin omultobdi. Kadalmungtel mogomaga omsubedel girer. A yet chairman a akme kertmoktel nel wasin. Igaigidel palasi sil nga aset tiyal batset pil. If kadamodisaidel mobula lobongel tiyal batset pil akme kertmokwasi akmosention no. Ndyaumtoora lakrantel maste itangra ilong. Ndya iding itza unfair el nga loala aset tiyal batset pil. Mal limitera time. Ndyaadha wel aware information ogadu wel vursa igai gidel tokora. Ya magodgohe. Maqmriengasulil girelse len. Se ya diyagal goragikelal decisiono blad makegiringi. Le tangarinya otsensi. Mal uben ndi klotutel gi damogolgi klanada olbi. Make sure kadambradgutmokli amgiret el ngalsobakltir alad benben. Ala kalwi damnel mensio ngil not only assess. Aset tiyal bilendiregal no require retirement ra adra pension sixty five percent. So omalmasaula malungil urul girel tiya. Ya namklinvin sil wasin ndiyagun aksention liesel malakian. Tokora batset le mal lamobrogatak. Omla ngubutayigel me omokbrao dal tiya. Ungumangalat tokoy omnesoadal wasin. La galol apalasil mouray tra batset. Ngmo isisaktiya batset. Ya I'm sure tiya lurul blamwatmokli. Ya asubedel ngaga kantsensus ra adras senet akmode egrui daasa. Tiya tokora eseselen. Speaker. Adra bulul gukolto irgidlo ngitakmola galbul sixty five. Adiregal mal obrao. Ngonra igele isyu kadamadingera eleven no ikei. Algotobdidi tiya kadadinemre delosyalitiya bodolut aningidamomtumal. Omalmasauli gukwaya blamsobakli. Aksention gidela algasu se nga gamalmrengasulil. Girela mal gomaga lugo. Akki olitlo wasin. Ungil mandimla kamutia lugo domsa ministeria NPII. E seldegor airport mal dyagal unil kertmok. Naministero bianga sumorensa. Et ya dyagamok spearingi ilipuga wrel airport. Asubedel medigal gukpatienza asfaran zirka ombo. Ungil wrel airport. Anso la speaker.
Mlamlam saulanga ilong. Kabonge vice speaker.
Eh speaker malungil usubakusel mergoma. Um. Lugo takdeligetabro ilong speaker maigel umdilong girela igel. Me mensio ngil ngil me eit palasi me ngaraus nyaa. Amile Albert take out emobe visitra wi. Madilmita speaker wasigel igel palasi. Uh proposal son. Osen magotokta speaker bo se prebil. Bo nyapablik heringi. Ilaman klo obrao. Igo dyagasabedendi. Gil arabili mogodi gid. Akti dyagal dyagamodiswe arabulun. Espeselyigat tokora wa retirement magan speaker. Um. For one thing speaker egal. Application ra kabimenta hara. Although. Secure. Um. Benefit ma ubungora. Um. Security tiya adhuguro. Magan girela kabiment. Idamadingera wasin. Kabimenta ngaramulmen dimla kadiyagakutmokdisegid wasin girer jarra. Gil girer jarra to secure tokora esesma pension. Um. Ya namkripoposa la osi rumo sixty five. Agina alamomo. Retire wasiaradha they live longer. Before we can move to another five years. Osen nga bilas tagal. Se excuse rigid wasai. Se baudodo mutia moma adhida adhabelasapir. Ekadu didigal adhuguro. Tokodonye held ra alad. Maldu maklolo ngel arabul wasin. Nam. Dimnawuyol teradrakan namalala ilukmu sixty ilukmu. Se senkana tiyal bi la stargera igel. Anya mu sixty and half ma sixty one and half. Mongomomona sixty five. Um. Ndyaagali. Ndaktosem hitulas speaker niwora unfair. Uh adhuguro. Um. Rito se igel eit in palasis. Set one. Eh bo nyataim. Kertmoksepre kills. Eh the whole da heringa igel. Is one of them get get aid. Um. Takdeligetara ilong detmokora. Mongudu motatsegid. Si gid omita speaker. Ba nyangala adhabel. Simbol. Motmoly omesel viskasa igel dyagadiget gin adhabelo viskasa. Gil bablik heringis. Ma sumosegid ngarya mutu birra gaminsenang ra wili speaker. Mlamlam so la.
So la vice speaker. Kabang bo ngel bilio.
Mlamlam saule speaker emalungil gabsingel mergawa. Arbitla adaro gui. Akmadigel manno. Klowrela gamitil omesatiyangi. Emulayigel ngalele madu lo. Lobongela president diregal ngaregel miting lobantir adras senet. Emamlam kertmokla audor emal nyamil audor. Eh diregal mal agil lobongela igel. Bil kertmok. Igel palasil. Sil tobat tiyangi. Eh to ngakapi. Eh gistria adhabelo eh tumaldil mesanaga. Kasi igamal igal dakatsel. Elmrairel altay. Girer del muadudu ya bo unil mesi. Gutmokmakmal di. Mrengasulema chairman gamitil mlam utmoklagamo. Malungil. Eh wayegidil. Bil adu man rest assure the president to be public. Kasi abila ama tobat ra dimre dal time. El muadresa igaid. Manse adhugid ma president. Eh diregal adhugid ma adregal state rigid. Eh komo udaswir eh mesel makloututelel. Eh diregal di pok kluutlouren asunela gamitil malili amalungil urior. Eh diregal eh wadu ra sielig ra dili trangan ilong. Kasi olai. Um. Naministero bianga mowawreis October one negida dyak. Man girer mo mokadu ngik. Kasi bo blakar omurubulouren. So la ngi speaker.
Mlamlam so la kabonge aribalbo ngesa ring. Dimla aldars.
Malungil gabsingel merkas speaker. Vice ma floor maka chairman kamanso la. Awin nurerim. Akmalmlano tiling mallobtokal kiwi tiyan. Tiyan batset rberanga. Makmalano tiling. Kadamstria ten percenti onsiya eight. Ndya kundinga kameyinditu miwakani kan make sense. Kadamas kamowreis ra ten percenti oduti. Ndigi onsiya. Agingwa eight percent ringi. Makmalusingel no drangan. Mongomonge ndina klos top. Ling gamralila it's a good job. Emne separate igid roask speaker. Mongdyagul dakbutya. Mga diregal nel. Nomto karingi wasi ulgumkadomo otakmundya. Ting malungil. Aditrigi blokaramo karika. Girela hospital. Uh. Aminista vice vice president da dingwa three sixty. Kadamnamisa sil three hundred. Esel dongomora minister of health which is the vice. And zero balance. Hmm. Se ngalanya explanation are in zero balance.
Oila.
Sel seven uh. And number twenty three. So. Vice president yes and yet then minister and then zero balance. Si gidakadim lagrik. Algire seling. Akondasweing. Hospitala by girer dal increase more. Yes, ingirer dal hara abilsargid. Ndiklangara rad. Hospitala. Omkarara rad. Olsobalara rad. Ya alida. Omoraara soler tir. So that's the last. Stabrigid before we go somewhere up there. Hospitala gidha girer priority. Girer priority. Mongselbola do laseringi atitrigi blokaramo. Titoakararo. Kowrengulugumandir kasabedel moruli. Edong sikli. Osisiul time. Ah elim elang. Emlarinya meeting ra rubul belau marbebe ra adal girer tiyal drugs or belau. Mlamosi soril declareringi pandemic. And dingkoram no dyaki sang. Anything about drugs tiyang. Of rehabilitation building. I don't know maybe akaluit. Maybe lasab air web tryka. Ma diurung olai akasin. Si abedel mutel moruare oturangi somewhere. Le drugs or belau ha. Mlamlam tiya tiya ser. Tiya mlao pride. Arangalig ulgumkoma attend. Ngarinyara maasal admit akmarangaramas mer. Toospe eri. Ndidi ti mamallegongel tur tiya lobantiritirgal. Nomkawadarara adha ma magarara se. Mong. Mural ora momaknitarnutel. Dorensa ra adriel modori admit akmanganakika ngarangiltikui. And ding malmrengarangak omkodongarbulis elbelmo. Eh bolot tungir se. Or bolot tungira. Abi age. Emla happen ra adam abi age se of se trilen. To sumase selgi ba agimokabulu. Ndityara. Makmalolngitil wasi. Polse abed. Atsukumisabeda aligeta seven five thousand moro. Moramasil belau. Medasikia somewhere in this page. Sixty eight page. Edot tungise gid el mortirgal ngaliged. El mural may. Etiraya future rigid. Tiraya investment rigid rogul dong okbutyang. Maksayda maldi ontige chairman you did a good job thank you.
Mlamlam so la ngesensamel. Ngagel se. Koratribel.
Oh dyaga. Selige hospital. Concerning. Di sel tokora. Minister of Health and Human Services. Se ol minister out. Them. Naminstera minister of Health Vice President. Muududro office of Vice President. Them dyagavulugumuludro. Minister of Health Services. So wherever the president or the vice president becomes the minister. Kadasiyo out selududellem dyagumuduringi. Ududan as a vice president. Walmagdumel siyo out. Sil di tokora ministry. Ni sel tokora drugs speaker. Abila gidha ngara senet. And sel tokora rehabilitation. We need to come up with a scheme. Omdekuntelalu dodu demgarang the services say. And that's where the professionals come in. Mosel ditte minnakunlado ma type of services. Sil ngi ra. Se diregal wandaguyadel lobongela ministry ra help. Diregal yes. Namgali kusetya. Lamopabni me belau. Tiya se delomula. Ulmagala. Switchintela angala. Yagidile. Senetera. Esella alade aldi losada ngalabelau. Kiilil employee ra wekabni ngi amogilim madraktesto. Sil mosada publik kabimenta ma kabiment. Se mugidum kademoso isipis. Igaida. Si esnesesel bromso la ngala attention asegid. Ya kadamnel wasin. Titi era. Senet. Audor sel la. Ya kadamnel mitulobantiragul belau. Nmitseya monexel subject rigid. Kadonamo ngel wasi attention amnamo adharo gui. Ma diregal lobongeme. Mo uligilense. Ding. To put funding la aladagadikwasin waranangemore. Dospe experto hospital ma adra. Dyagdospe arbulis dyagdospe. Dospe se tigal professionals. Se gid tokora rehabilitation tokora. Gil rogul. Adraaks agid. Se gid. Ding. Se gid liga MHS ulmagadingiluse. Se tokora hospital and services. Se diregal ngisil dodudel equipment. Namotuyisil moitringi. Ulmagadamnel feel safe wasin dyagaluqumda dodudel moendrai. Um. Expenditure tirangase. Sel momesel sel daalisis. Hemovallisis. Hospital ma presidentamnel vidusigil because of the actual services. Lda. On top. Sekuiladu dodanlamo dyagal neseseiri. Kadamvidusigil mosel actual. Igaida. Tomese. Dyagadugul wasin. Um ngarinyasulbi segida dyagada funding. Dodu mosel actual tir ospe. Ya kadamministera tealo wasin. Kuma tir dodudu omu. Motamomagali sel actual le gidha gabe. E se dodome se ifma ulmakme question da ministry wasin. Lamgombitusa. Hospitala se gid. Ya wasin. Eh expenditure ngase. Dyagdospe asegid. Ya kadamnamala. Alugu. Madingasulbi. Se gid. Ya mso la. Kumran wasi makamitil wasin dyagamo matamal hospital.
Eh se gidakora. Assurance service kidat chairman awisemi sakabonge ngarilong. Oh awero bange che chairman delegat. Iguaisi floor. Ki dangarinya session rigid luriu rasuel drug services akumisattemi. Eh tiyamnamo eleven forty. Magardigidil omeseridin girer dal session rigid elangi kopie. Piginraniks. Kabonge ngarilong.
Actimre. Akki ogina chairman. Kadamadingel kasesel ten ten percenti kuisa adragabilmek tamo effective October first. Magadamadingel wasitiyal batset kapazienta. Mlao yadingmla faktor ina igeni dod. Alsela egal wispe ten ministries ma. Sen. Mtsabeda daitarad madigasentelalu dodu ablal. Gararingi tiyal kuisa ten percent. Oh la kadamodu aktenal million. Ablal gararingi tiyal ten percent para montega effect October first. Vice sikli sel momesela eleven barisem matual daswan. Ela ten percenta kadigun se gidinularingi. Yangilasa total amount ra. Ela fifteen percenti giramso. Nah fourteen million. Three hundred thousand. Half rise. Ela fourteen million. Thirty six thousand. Se gid actual number including regelbebe. Although. Seventeen percenta. Amitesseni. Yeah. Malungil ammansaula chairman akwa. Dimnaksal danglisel ulue. Insodamom danglektungen. Mu wayigel dilusala blain. Girela obiangan mo blakar gule tiyagid makwalu dodu mlam kuisa makabim. So la.
Mlamlam so any more. Question. Uh lagendiyakpogulara sentio. Amatirerogul goonge mad adaptertiastening gamitir report. Uh duoi. Omto. Namnga reporter floor.
Mlamolme speaker kadangara item ten. Yakangarini ma eleven. Uh Marcel Bill Calendar. Eh imongangara first reading. Uh mega motional passan first reading senate bill number twelve dash sixteen. ST two.
Se gid. Motion clear kama iwea title ra.
Senate bill number twelve dash sixteen ST two. Tyalul dasulmala amadooli abesel blyong lelma ra title fourteen rapala national code. Ilmomaqtabiya lulu laudasulmala algirela omlatkel. Makangeira adal momolu'ra dui. Magukpebe rangodolumsodel. Tyalul dasudronla ablai introducing ya Senator Alderweil, Senator Sungino, Senator Mariu, ma Senator Pedro.
Se gid title ra bill ma ulala open. Brangilad salgorakmus esel girer se gid billa senet. Uh kabonge esar.
Ngania tikinyadar adhabelal wasi. Oh. Malungil gabsingel akwata. Ya floor either vice. Makamboi rogui. Uh. Tiya. Elagida ngat tiyan masaula. Tiyalbiya masaula siwar gidha adhabelau. Ngarinyar atingya adhabelal wasi tiyamnar matadan may. Tiyangamnar matadan may. Yes, yuangar gidhar adhabelau. And. Raadame Ellen May. Maratalad. Marubuaro bakamaramasra belwat. Practice ringil tokoi. Ling. Tuabadarab lain mora paya ulmarubakara belau ou bay. Aba aberrotal. Berotala darangarir ma. Dagingir maklokliagel lokursai. Buse losira saelirir. Not necessaridad but. Se losira saelirir etosi garingel atter tir. Yes, yuangar belau ulterakmo oyndyak. Ling. Damlado ngel soririn tokuk atter. Matirgel. Legidimogu gidhalab. Om. Ndya katso amantido ortilang etu asin. Delegat nagakita selim. Em disyuangar belau. Ou yaramasar belau amsisi etiramil. Disyuangar belau selabora bay. Yarubakamil. Angel saelirir. Yes, sumong modi omodia. Eteteru maasan may. Yes, yuangar gid. Komodong okla. Yagimalibi ergumiu. Mraulmaka mortiang yangraulmaka mortilang. Esel volmre. Etamarail. Et turubakamodong okla. Emomilit. Mga oldubertiang. Et tiyangadi mamalisi ersegid. Girar adhabelau. Dyakvalilita dun. Komanso la.
Mlamlam so la ngesa ngarinyamutalsal mo odul giratyang. Andyak. Atsukman. Ndigasal mo odurtiangi. Bogular sentio tirugul goongertiyara first reading ilduoi. Omto. Mlamaga etiak asan ringi moragamitira. Elget. Oto. Chairman ra helden cultural affair. Uh floor either.
Kadangara second reading speaker. Uh. Mcmotionel. El pasara ongerulo miwel. House bill number twelve dash twenty three. Dash three.
Speaker motional floor mlam segen amangari amutalsal lastel. Mongodul girer sel. Ilalage bodolar sentio tirugul goongenda. El pasara second reading uh house bill number. Twelve dash twenty three dash three. Anduoi oi. Ari omto. Dyaka omto. Namnga bill.
Oise etiya mlamaga. Open gelagel amendments ra second reading committee report. There is now house bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three. HD one. Eh. Dolmol men dyagangara third reading. Kadangar sel resolution calendar eh. Speaker. Emekuntira. Maldigedebel vise.
Short vises. Tensial amutal orviso. Floor either.
Mlamolme speaker ngarinya imol ngarsel committee report. Ma assigna senate joint resolution number twelve dash nine. Eden mora appropriate committee.
Medi dontera claramodil iwea title ringi woramakatakli ilmora way. Assign.
Senate joint resolution number twelve dash nine. Tyal senate joint resolution. Saklisi elablur belau mongomuyl goonge ngarangil. Twenty twenty four federal programs and services agreement. Traadongela kabimenta blu belau. Makabimenta blu ramigel. Tyal resolutionable introduction ya president ra Senator Hokkon Staus.
Se gid title resolution nama assignment. Tiya ulitlasel bura foreign affairs eh vice. Mongomora gamitira foreign affairs chairman ngi vice speaker. Floor.
Mlamolme speaker ndyakangara fourteen. Marcel item fifteen petitions, memorials and communication. Uh. Please note tra miscellaneous number seventy. Bablingela chief justice niigalaw. Eh. Sel FY twenty twenty six sel budget request tra blara. Uh miscellaneous seventy one bablingela belau offshore fisheries. Mergawe speaker. Saudara digingela marine spatial planning. Uh miscam seventy two. Regal babil mutal bablingela chief justice agirigalaw. Girela appointment ra associate justice Fred Isaac. Awlubongla ngaringsel miscellaneous communication seventy three. Foreign investment board. Tiya request for comments. Ra. Foreign investment amendment application ra hero novu osuka. Mlamolme speaker. Uh laga ngodol ngarangal mora. Item sixteen ra miscellaneous business.
Ndya dagara miscellaneous business ma. Ngania adhul korasal. Ah bliliu. Speaker galaptabol miscellaneousal ngaga ndi atay ma medang. Ki olmita maneksi. Bosi agasun so la. Uh malmasauli. Saalage dyagadu ra announcement.
Uh. Mraulubongla kadangara announcement. Eh loa dyak. Make mega motion speaker. El muri seser tiyal blai. El mora next day sessions.
Ida motion ra floor ngel goongel da vises already. Uh malmutra next session duoi.
Tutara kluguk thank you.
Tutara klura. Uh se gid. Okay. Uh the vises malmutra tutaraklu. Sel one minute past twelve o'clock ikidha vsesion.